Okay.
All right. Good morning, everybody. It's November 6th, 2020. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is not being recorded by WACA cable TV, but it is being recorded by Mr. Adams and will be provided later. Our order of business this morning, this is our Friday morning standing meeting to discuss this COVID status, our call to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. Time for public comment administrative items include the COVID-19 update, COVID-19 travel policy, Thanksgiving break extended for remote only. Phases models of learning, status of athletics, season two winter sports, and then we will adjourn. So I will take a roll call for the school committee and then ask you all to just confirm that you're okay with the order of business this morning, starting with you, Mark Terry.
Yes.
Kathy Bates.
Here and yes.
Paul Kendall.
Here and yes. Aaron did come in now.
Yeah. Aaron Williams.
Here and yeah.
Excellent. Okay, so I will start by asking if there's anybody here from the public that would like to offer comment for us this morning. And then seeing or hearing none, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Adams.
Great, thank you. Let me just start by saying again, I'm going to reiterate this every single time we have a meeting. Thank you to Ed and Audrey and the entire nursing staff at all of our schools for their constant communication, their tireless work. Audrey shared with some numbers with me the other day. I thought was pretty unbelievable since school began. And this is relating to, I think, just COVID related conversations and calls. The nursing staff in our, in the Ashland Public Schools has made 2,045 calls since the beginning of school. So I think, you know, whenever we, and Ed, you probably had about 16,000 yourself, but and Amy Child and all the people who are working in the town to ensure that whatever we do and however we approach our day is done so in a safe and thoughtful manner. And that's because of the work that they're doing behind the scenes. It's certainly not because of anything I'm doing or our principals are doing as much as it is our nursing staff and coordinating with Ed and Amy and those that working for the task force. So thank you to all of you. I appreciate that. So. That being said, I'm about to share this week's data with you, which again, last week we mentioned it was going to still be high. And we'll have some explanations from, from Ed and Audrey if they so choose. One thing I want to bring your attention on the, on the dashboard is the state. Once again, has changed when they're reporting. They will be reporting townwide data today. It used to be on a Wednesday, then it was on Thursdays. And then as I was preparing the document for this meeting, after they had posted the daily dashboard and the weekly dashboard, they did not, and actually wrote on there, they will not be publishing townwide data until today. So you do not have that data as a reference point, just so we're clear. It's because the state has not published it.
And is that going to be a new published date or is it just, do you feel like probably with election stuff, there's delays?
I think, Erin, I think if you look at some of the dashboard on the statewide level and the DPH, they're changing a lot of how they're reporting stuff. So I don't know if they're looking at changing what that part of the metric or that part of the dashboard looks for them. I didn't see anywhere and maybe I missed it, but I didn't see anywhere where that was going to be the consistent day. I think, I think it was just for this week. That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah, the, the message said today in particular, it didn't say Friday is going forward. So they might change that, but as of right now, this seems like an anomaly.
Right. So that's what we're hoping. But yeah. Okay. So let me share this with you. Can everybody see this? Okay. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So, so once again, we're looking at if we were to just look at our incidents and daily rates on this side for 100,000, we're at 12.59. And we, you know, we knew this would continue to rise based on conversations we had last week with some cases that had come in after the, the data was supplied at the end of last week. As you can see, we have also had over this week, you know, 10 cases and of varying ages. And we don't have the data for, again, our other local towns that we're competing against because that's part of the state dashboard. So I would just want to focus on, we have 47 open cases. This was as of 11 o'clock yesterday, Ed, correct? It's adjusted since. Maybe he's not there.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is correct. Sorry.
Maybe that was a conversation you fell asleep at when we were talking. So, so this is where we are. It's, it's not a, you know, two weeks ago, we were 11, we went down a little bit and then now we're back up again. It's sort of the seesaw of, of emotions on a, on a regular basis. As you can tell, probably within the community, this week I sent home two emails talking about cases that impacted our school community. And, and we'll get into that in a moment because I want to make sure that we're fully understanding how we approach that. Questions on this for, for anyone? And I also wrote here.
Yeah, Jim, just one certification that I was looking at yesterday.
Yep.
After you sent it over, it's really a question for you. The number when we talk about open cases, 47 under quarantine restrictions, that's just positive cases, right? That's not other people who are quarantined because of close contacts. Is that right?
That is correct. Those are confirmed cases.
So is there, is there any value in us knowing how many people are being monitored as close contacts or quarantined? And I just, I don't know, for whatever reason, struck me last night when I was looking at this. But obviously there are more people and kids impacted from each positive case. I don't know if it influences how we would think about anything, but I figured I'd at least throw it out there.
I, I can certainly, if, if everyone, I can certainly compile, can compile that data. You know, we can include that next week if you want.
I don't know. Do you think it has any value?
It stuck out to me too. So I'm glad you brought that up because I think it's at least part of the discussion of how broad reaching one case or a small pod of people then ends up being and what's that multiplicative factor?
And maybe it's, I think, sorry, Paul, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, Mark.
I guess the, the probably is most relevant to us is how many, how many students are impacted. Right? Because that, that serves as a better measure of disruption to the district. The fact that, you know, there's one person in a group of four adults that has it and three others that are quarantined, probably isn't all that relevant to our thought process. And certainly anecdotally, we know, we know you're, you're very much aware of how many people in buildings are impacted. I, I, like I said, I'm just putting it out there to see if, if others think that that's a relevant data point to be looking at as we evaluate this week.
So explain it again, what you're looking for or what you're, what, what he might pull out of the, are you saying out of the open cases, the 47 that we see right now?
Yeah, I think what we talked about is adding a data point to say, here's a proposal. How many students do we have that are quarantined even though they haven't tested positive?
Oh, okay.
Those are their contacts.
Yeah, I, I can definitely pull that data.
Yeah, and I don't think it, it would be impactful for our decision making on whether we do remote or anything, but I think to something you and Aaron said, I think it helps paint a picture of the impacts that people's behavior have, right? And how, how broad it is. I don't, I don't think we make it because these are, these are people that are not confirmed that are already quarantined. So as it relates to us making any particular decision, I don't think it, you know, that we've, they've already been, you know, kind of quarantined. But I think from a discussion point, we keep on harping on people's actions and their impacts. I think it helps to paint that picture from that perspective, right? Hey, the, from, you know, Ed can say, hey, from these two instances, you know, somebody got together. And we have now had 15 families quarantining because of one event, right? Or something like that. And that helps people understand the, the impacts, not just to our positive numbers, but just how, how that, how broadly one poor decision can, can impact the, the community as a whole. That's, that's just my piece of it. I don't think we make a different decision based on that, but I think it helps with the conversation we're trying to, you know, have about it.
Well, it's possible that it could impact that decision depending on how, how big it gets, you know, certainly as regards like the absentee rate, whether it's involving staff that have to now quarantine. So it, it impacts our ability to staff the building or it could, if this is going to, you know, keep growing the way it has over the past couple of weeks. So there, there's a potential. I guess what I'm saying is I would support having this information and, and we'll use it however we feel we need to use it, but I think it would be helpful as part of the discussion.
Yeah, I, I think, I agree with all the comments associated. I think that's, Ed, Audrey and I are actually looking at that data, to be honest with you, before we make any decisions when, about coming back into school or not. I mean, we are looking at, okay, who was a close contact? And then what's the next step with that close contact? Do we have to worry about another spider web, if you will? If, if a close contact tested positively, then there's another set of contacts, right? That would have to occur. So, so we are constantly looking at that and I don't think it's a bad idea to have that, that data. And I, and I agree. When we're looking at the number of students and/or adults who are out of a building, it could absolutely impact our, our operations. So knowing that in advance is, is a good thing.
Okay, great. Okay, so we have that and.
So Ed, yeah. Ed, will you just take a moment and, and I, I put into context the stuff you shared that two households had four members each. So you're, you're, you know, so you're looking at eight, then six more, and then eight more. So 16, 22 members, right, of the 47 or that one or those, those homes. Whoa, you're muted, Ed. Sorry. Ed, yeah.
Fell asleep. All right. Yeah. So I thought it's important to show you that data just because I don't want to, you know, if you say 47, you know, you, you think about 47, that could be literally spread across the entire town. But I thought it was interesting how a lot of these, you, you, the, the amount of people are in the small, you know, you can't call it a cluster, but when you think about it, eight people in two houses, you know, so just to try to show that it's not a major type of spread. Now, there is also part of that 47 number is that group is part of a cluster of six that I did not want to put, you know, so again, so when you really think about it, it's 41. Currently, because that, that cluster group that I'm dealing with is they contracted it outside of Massachusetts, but had to come back here where they're staying. But we took the hit because of the address.
And to, to that point of the 47 or 41 that are represented on the, on the chart, are there connections between some, some group, for example, the six that are showing positive on 1029 and the two, the four that show positive on 1026, you know, are, are any of the, what we're seeing here connected to each other?
So, yes, so the, the one with the two household, three members each, that, that is the, that's coming, that'll be coming out for next week. That was part of that, that original cluster we talked about a couple of weeks ago, and they'll, they'll be finishing up their isolation. I think it's actually today.
Otherwise, these are, these aren't necessarily connected cases.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, and I, I think what's, I don't know if there was a normalized way to present it, but I think kind of what you're, we've been talking about for the last couple of minutes, that is a valuable data point to say, hey, you know, without getting into specifics and details, you know, 32 of the 47 come from three incidences or are related to three, you know, you know, so it's something that quantifies that number to say, hey, listen, this isn't, it's just going on all over the place, but that it's, we were able to relate, you know, these 18 together and these five together. And so between three related, you know, three incidences or whatever you want to call, but that they're, that they're related and this part of it is the, the spread, right? The community spread, it would be the concern.
And that helps. You know, and another interesting point too, when I look at the addresses, you know, you definitely see close contacts end up testing positive in people that live in the smaller homes or apartments where they don't have the ability to isolate from the positive person as, as easily, even if you've got a large house. So you definitely see that also in the numbers.
So Ed, that kind of brings me to sort of two questions or topics that I, I wanted to specifically ask you on and then sort of talk through with the board members. So the first is now that we're having households where if you're, I'm going to assume like households with four members are often going to be a two parent, two kid household or some, some makeup of where there's parents and children. And you have siblings who now all of them are testing positive. What are you seeing as far as asymptomatic children versus something that mimics a cold or a, you know, just a regular fall cold versus full blown, oh, I can definitely identify that these symptoms match up with the COVID symptoms. Like, are you seeing a consistent pattern? Are you seeing it vary based on age, like where the younger kids aren't presenting, the older kids are? Like, what are you seeing? And, and the reason why I'm asking is that leads into a conversation about siblings and sibling quarantining.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. And I'm sure all the nurses will agree. We definitely see it like under 30, age 30. We definitely see either no symptoms or very mild, you know, fever of 99, you know, a sore throat. We definitely see that opposed to, I think above the 30 age, we definitely see the more significant symptoms.
And are you, like, who's testing positive first? Are you mostly seeing, is it a kid testing positive first and then a parent because they didn't?
Parent.
Parent. Parent testing.
It's almost always the parent who contracted it at work or somewhere else.
Okay.
Almost always.
Okay, so then to, to delve into the, the sibling conversation, Mr. Adams, do you mind if I share my screen for just a second?
So, so I, I think you've mentioned this before, and if a parent tests positive, the whole household quarantines, right, Ed? So.
That's what we've been doing. Yeah.
So I mean, it's not that one, a sibling can go, somebody can go to school, that they're quarantined if some, if there's a positive case.
Oh, yeah.
The whole household is quarantined.
So not necessarily a positive, but close contacts where and that's, so it's the trickle through potential of when you have children that have, are asymptomatic and you're waiting for them, but then their sibling can go to school one to two times in a quarantine period and potentially be an asymptomatic carrier themselves.
I'm not following. Yeah.
I get, can I?
Contact.
The contact of a contact.
Yeah.
But not a contact, not a direct contact.
I think that's, I think that is what you would call it.
So somebody who's not a close contact, but somebody who's a, would be a close contact of a close contact.
But right, so Aaron, I didn't mean to cut you off about sharing a screen, sure, certainly. But so here's the, here's the, the way I've been thinking about it. And every time I have these conversations and it, and it can actually delve into, you know, even this week's scenarios, right? Where, where we might find someone who is a positive and then you identify those close contacts of that positive. And those contacts are now have to be quarantined. And potentially, so I use my own house, for instance, if, if I'm the positive and, and Alex is now my close contact and he was at school and walked around and, and, you know, potentially had a contact of a contact. So one of his friends, Alex has to be quarantined because I am positive. But the close, the contact of the contact does not have to be unless Alex tests positive because now they become a contact.
Right.
That's, so, so that's the process we take is that if you're a contact of a contact, those kids don't have to be quarantined. We have to identify and we do identify. But, but that being said, unless the close contact becomes positive or test positive, then we don't have any further, you know, work to be done other than continue to monitor and watch symptoms because it could occur later on.
Okay, so, and, and this is where I guess for Audrey and Ed, from a health expert standpoint, if we have, so like the cases from the, this week, right? Somebody to pop positive over the weekend, you have multiple families with multiple children across multiple schools that, you know, there's one certain grade that is considered the close contacts that are going to be quarantining in red. But you have their siblings who would not have to quarantine. And so the symptom onset for the close contact is what, five to 10 days is usually the window when the symptoms would show up. But then they have a sibling going to school in the green based on if you're in, or they would not go to school until after their quarantine, but their sibling is going to school one, two times before the quarantine is over and their own symptoms based on if their sibling were to show up positive would show up and they may or may not go to school a third time and they're also, their siblings quarantine would be over. And then it shifts to base on whether, like, when the event is, what your last name is, whether cohort one or cohort two. What I'm trying to show is in the sibling, you are potentially going to school and especially if children are asymptomatic. And to Ed's point about smaller homes being tougher to quarantine in. And then also are we, is the quarantine of a close contact, are they really staying in their room away from their siblings for 14 days? I'm not sure. I could enforce that.
That's isolation, not quarantine.
Okay, so then there's going to be interaction with siblings. And as we're, we're right now, this week, the cases, Ed, what you sent as far as the weekly cases, there's only five other weeks, the rest of the year that have higher cases than where we're at now. And so my thought in my head was that we need to start considering siblings of close contacts in order to keep the schools more likely open rather than having to shut a school. And that wouldn't that, like, you know, keeping a couple of siblings in a sibling group out help us keep schools open? That was my thought.
Audrey.
It's a tough one.
Did not, did that not share the entire time I was talking?
No.
Sorry. Oh, my God.
We understood what you were saying.
Okay.
Sorry, there's, so you've got your close contact and your siblings. So you can see where the siblings' symptoms
Yeah.
potentially show up and they've been in school twice. They may, you know, if symptoms show up, they go into school a third and a fourth time. That's, that's where I was going with this.
And part of it is, we have to remember, and Audrey, I didn't mean to cut you off, that, and we have this conversation, is what is considered a close contact? And, you know, technically, you know, if our design of our classrooms, we've done this purposefully, right? And over six feet of distance and mask on. And, and that has, I think, been, been really a, a pretty important piece of what we've done in terms of the structure and organization of the, of the classrooms in the schools in order for us to have limited numbers of actual close contacts. But I, I think almost what we're getting to, Erin, to me says that anytime there's a case, then it's almost like a shutdown immediately. Because if we've got someone with five close contacts and now they have siblings and now that can spread out to spider out to 20 people, what does that mean for the, for the buildings? I'm not sure.
And, and I want to just, and Audrey, if I'm off a little bit on my numbers here, just please chime in. The one thing that, just so that you know, that we've also discovered through all of this is almost, I would say, high 90% of the people that were quote deemed close contacts, high 90% tile, never tested positive. Especially, you know, with the mask use and, you know, it's not like a majority of these close contacts are testing positive. They, they are negative right through their whole 14 days.
This, this is a hard one. We struggled with this since, since July, what to do. So we, we do look at each case, case by case. What is going on in the household? We ask the questions. How many bathrooms? How many bedrooms? Is it a mom with two kids? So we do, we try to get as much information as we can and try to make the best decision as we can. But this whole contact of a contact is, I know it's a hard one to understand, but I think it has to do with viral load too. They talk about that, like.
And I also want to just say one more thing. This actually brings up a really interest. We actually already dealt with this this morning. Audrey, myself and another nurse. So we have a, a family that a parent is a contact. They live in a very small apartment. And we've already talked to the parent that, we talked to them at seven o'clock this morning. We've asked them to keep the two children home until the contact can be tested in five days. We've already done that.
Okay, so that, so there, you're giving, give different guidance to different families situationally.
It's all situationally.
We're looking at every situation individually. We, we, we don't have just a broad statement.
And that's why, like, when we're opening schools, that's why we, we tend to be a little more, Ed, Audrey and I, and are taking our time to make sure we understand all of the situation before we make a decision. Even in these scenarios where this week at, at the lower elementary schools, right? And, you know, Audrey, Ed and I were, okay, here's where we are. And we've been fortunate, right? We've been fortunate when, when we find things out in cohorting and what it looks like. And able to say, okay, let's identify these individuals. Let's go through the process. And we didn't make a decision on right away because we wanted to make sure we had opportunity to have, as Ed said, the contacts be tested, have opportunities to get that data first before we then determine what's next. So I, I think it's critically important that the, the community understands this is a very deliberate and thoughtful process. And I would never, and I wrote this to a parent, I would never, ever open schools if, if I thought we were putting, and I know Ed and Audrey wouldn't either, because it's the three of us having this conversation. We would never do that if it's going to put anyone at risk for health. Just, it's not, that's faculty, staff, students, or custodial nursing, you name it, everybody. We're, we have committed to that. That's for sure.
And I think there's a, something that Audrey was, a point that Audrey was trying to make there too, I think is important. And if I muck it up, Audrey, keep me honest. But I think it's important to know this is, if, if I, if I come in contact and I, and I get it today, five o'clock today, I'm not a spreader right away because I need it to build up in me enough to be able to spread, correct? So it, it doesn't spread it, you know, it, it takes a little bit of time to build up. I have to have a, as she described, a viral load in order to be able to spread. And so that's probably one of the reasons why the contacts of close contacts and that it dissipates, you know, it, it takes some time to build up in, in them. So, and again, that's why we're sticking with the six feet in schools, right? And, and those things. And if we're doing those, if we're, if we're doing the six feet and we're, you know, getting a higher percentage of our policies and rules and protocols being followed there, even if someone were to come in, the likelihood that they can, can spread it should be. The likelihood that they can, can spread it should be low. So.
We're following DPH's guidelines. They're telling us a contact of a contact can go to school, go to work, be in the community. That's their guidance and that's what we're following. But Ed, Jim and I look at each case and try to figure out what is the best. Best way to handle each specific case. I, I'm working on a case right now, a household of four. One, um, one person tested positive, eventually two of the other three tested positive and, and one's negative and they all live in the same house. So go figure.
And Audrey, like in that example, you know. Was the, was anybody asymptomatic or waiting for that viral road load and the viral load wasn't matching, say, symptoms? And is that why it spread within the house? And I guess that's where my concern about the contact of a contact. When it is a sibling and, and I'm not talking about, you know, uh, oh, I spent, you know, 10 minutes with my friend and she's. You know, I'm more talking about siblings and being under the same roof, sharing bathrooms. Children are. I, I would, I have a larger home and I would struggle to keep my boys apart. And that's where, so just with that specific case or with some of the cases you have seen.
This, this particular family, all three positives are all asymptomatic. And.
Well, I, I think Erin, to, but to your point about the timing and the viral load, right? So if, if I'm a close contact, but my sibling is going to go to school. You know. I can't pass it to them until I've developed that viral load. And if I get tested, the likelihood that that person got it from me before I tested positive. And was able to develop enough viral load in that time period to give it to somebody else. Is exceptionally low because even in that situation. I'm likely going to test positive. Before they have the viral load to be able to be spread. And then, at that point, they are my close contact and they're quarantined and we've shut it down. So it's a very unlikely scenario. If we catch it and we know that they are a close contact, that. Their contact as a sibling could have spread it out. They can certainly get it. But we're talking about a, a, a very small window, it sounds like, of, of a possibility that they could be a spreader outside of there. Before you would have the, the close contact test positive. And Audrey and Ed, keep me honest there, but it, it sounds like that's a unlikely scenario. That the, that the contact of the close contact becomes, has a viral load enough to spread it before the close contact would have been identified as, as positive.
I think we have, I, I mean, I, I, I would be interested to know how many. Cases actually do exist within all the schools in the Commonwealth, like, um, with asymptomatic students. We're not testing every student. And we're not identifying because many, many of our students and maybe even adults could be walking around and have it. It's quite possible.
And we're not surveillance testing like some of the other towns, right?
Best thing, no.
Yeah.
A couple million dollars for me.
Yeah. That, that's a good point, Jim. That's, we talked about that how many times about the asymptomatic carriers? You, you, it's all an unknown, so much of it.
Ed, with the data that you do have, and now you could probably assign case numbers to being asymptomatic. And what Mark was asking for, for additional, like, you know, like sort of, sort of cluster data. Um, on the children, specifically the, you know, say five to 18 range or, or zero to 18. Could we get a count of asymptomatic? I see you nodding even though you're muted, so.
Yes, yeah, I, I can pull that data.
Okay, because I think, and, and that's fine. And like, I think what you guys are doing in a, like, on top of the DPH guidance is great. And understanding that it isn't a blanket and that you're really treating it, uh, family by family and case by case. But as these numbers go up to pretty much, you know, spring level. I think we need to start thinking about, uh, other data points and/or changes in methods to keep the kids in school as long as possible. And just kind of keep it all on our radars.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it, Erin. I think there are some good data points that we should be thinking about.
Yeah, thanks, Erin. And it sounds like Ed and Audrey are, have had those same things on their minds and they're acting accordingly. And, and they're tracing. So we do have a couple of policies we have to get through this morning. So if everybody's okay, I think it's a good time to move to that.
All right, so I do need to hold about five minutes.
Okay. Okay, Mark, did you have anything you wanted to share first before you go?
I guess I'd rather Paul or, or Kathy make the presentation on it. I did, I have read them. You know, I guess I'm interested mostly Paul and, or what are, what are we ultimately adding to the mix of. Dialogue or communication with the policies?
Yeah, so, Jude, do you want to, you want to frame kind of, uh, where we are with these and what, what our goals are?
Sure, um, I think, Mark, to, to an extent, and, and I'll be clear, we've worked not only with, um, John Foskett from, from our legal counsel, but also with Michelle Smith. So the policies that, uh, that you, the draft policy, if you will, uh, that you have has been vetted. By counsel, but also, uh, me working with, with Michelle. So language, um, that is acceptable to, to even the, the AEA. So what we're trying to frame was a couple of things. Obviously, we're quite concerned about vacations, holidays and travel. Uh, and how we can, um, help limit exposure, uh, if you will, to, uh, the schools in the, in particular. And obviously the executive order by the, by the governor, uh, that has been released in terms of travel to a higher risk states. And the requirements of, of those who leave our state to go into one of those higher risk communities. And, uh, that either the quarantining or testing before they come back, um, into our, our communities, uh, is important. And the one thing I was concerned about was how do we. Continue to ensure that, that our faculty and staff, one, is following that policy? Uh, and what are our, um, what can we do from a policy standpoint? And what you'll notice there is, it's just the policy is really about reiterating, um, our expectations and the governor's, uh, executive order. Uh, and then when we're dealing with families and kids, um, we certainly have a little more flexibility. With, uh, some requirements that we can have in terms of testing, uh, and, um, quarantining. So it, it really was. We want people to do the right thing. Um, and I think it goes back to that conversation. It's, if we do, continue to do the right thing. And not take risks, then we can stay open longer. Um, and this is sort of just, um, capturing that within the policy and. So. I don't know if that's what you're looking for, Paul, but if you want to.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think, I think that's good. So, uh, maybe I'll start with, uh, the simpler one here.
Yeah.
With a shorter one, I should say.
And remember, this is the first read, so this is not a, we're not voting on this. But I think it's important we have something out soon, next week.
So I assume everybody can see, uh. Can see that? I saw Mark raise his finger.
Yeah.
So again, this is, this is a, is relatively short. The first part is, is just trying to reiterate that we want people to do the right thing. Our goal is to keep the, the schools open. And just discouraging the discretionary travel, uh, particularly around the vacations that are coming up, uh, and things like that. It tries to just lay down what the, you know, what are we talking about when we're, we were talking about the employees and, and what a high risk area is. And, and, and those kinds of things. Essentially, the meat of it is just, we're, we're, we're requiring that the, the, the staff, before they come back to school. Have complied with, um, the governor's orders. Uh, we're also, you know. I, I think in, and we've, we've talked with Ed and Audrey about this. We're all, you know, think that the, the governor's order falls distinctively short of what we should be doing. And that you can have gotten, followed all the rules and still have stayed in a high risk area. Over two days after you tested positive or, or you've been tested, come back negative, but you contracted it. You know, after your test, and even at that point, you might have a viral load enough when you come back to school to, to be a spreader, right? So. So this also then encourages to go beyond that, saying that we, we, we would love if, if we encourage that. Staff get tested after their return. Um, and as close, you know, as, you know, if they had five days before they were coming back to, to, to work, to, to wait those five days to get the, the most accurate test. And, you know, and the, for, for that, we are offering, if they can, if they schedule ahead, to be able to use the, the testing we have internally. To accommodate that.
Okay, so open for discussion on this policy and we'll start with Mark if you have anything.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my, my immediate reaction and I, you know, I understand the. These is that. And you need to be allowed people to travel right now. If they go out into a, a high risk area. And come back, they're entitled to get, leave, um, under the federal law. And what that means is somebody could go to Rhode Island, if it's still a high risk area, go out for dinner. Come back and effectively be entitled to two weeks paid time off for nothing. Um, and it, and it's just the structure of the law and the order and how much we can do about that. The thing that I think we could do, and I appreciate your point, Jim, that this still would be subject of bargaining with each of our unions, so I'm not lying to that. Is whether or not there's the ability to, to sort of set a schedule or be more aggressive on the, you're going to do this, you have to agree to be tested. Also mindful of the fact that, you know, it sounds like if you're going to be exposed somewhere, the most. The ideal time to be tested is really five days after the fact, right? So my concern is that you've got somebody to go out to dinner in Providence. Come back and theoretically be required to be out of. School, out of work for two weeks on our dime, by their choice. And. At, at a bare minimum, it seems like that kind of person ought to be required to submit to a test after five days. I don't know if the union would agree to that. I understand that. I, I'm not sure. How aggressive the policy is going to go, go after. But, you know, that, that's the scenario that I think is the most challenging. And I've got to get to some more thoughts as to how do I feel about, how we want to push that? Because I don't like the idea that you don't have that much, um, control to make bad decisions. And impact on, on kids when staff are not there is significant, right? We're not talking about having a sub for two weeks because someone went out to dinner, didn't want to get tested. Um, and that's. That's a very difficult scenario for me to accept. Um, but I understand it's also a difficult one for us to manage and control. Um, and I also don't want to create a framework where the rules are such that people are going to lie about it, right? Just, you know, not like everybody's going to buy a plane ticket to go out to dinner and. That, that's what it offers a general premise. I will give some thought and, and hopefully offer some specifics or what have you. I have drafted a couple of different variations of this type of thing to clients. Take a look at those and see if there's anything that I can offer from those or as far as you, Paul, if you want to give it some thought.
Yeah, definitely send over anything you, that, uh, that you have there. Uh, we can, we can see what we can incorporate. I, I. You know, and we're, we're going to go over the other, the other policies for students and, you know, in the ideal world, we would, we would be asking everyone to, to. Follow best, what we would consider the ideal best practices. Uh, so I, I, I totally understand and, and concur with your sentiment. We want everybody, we want everybody in school healthy, safe, right? And. And so I, I think everybody, you know, should be doing everything, uh, they, they can to do that. And so I, I share your concern and, and, and striking that right balance is. Is always a challenge.
And I want to say, everything we're doing is really challenging. I'm dealing with a situation right now with a family who is divorced. And, um, custody rates are 50 50 and the, the kids, uh, go to their, their, one of the parents' house, uh, just over the line. In Putnam, Connecticut, if you will, like just over the border. And, and if they're a high risk state now, what does that mean? What's the travel order mean? And it's not just happening in, necessarily here, um, in, in Connecticut. But, you know, those are things that are real life situations that we've got to be thoughtful of.
Yeah, and, and I'm trying to remember that there were situations that the, the, but I don't think a custody situation like that was, was, was part of it.
It wasn't, right.
The normal travel, uh, stuff.
Mark, I know you need to go, but my biggest question to both you and Lori would be like, what, what weight does this have? How much teeth does it have? And the words should versus must from a legal standpoint. And, and just, I know you have to go, but to think about that and what your response back to us and when we do our second read.
Yeah, the, 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 the only must here is, uh, the governor's order, which is law. So, but.
But to your point, Erin, I mean, we, we did, uh, as Jim mentioned, um, it was reviewed by our attorney. Um, and there's also the component of Jim working with Michelle, which we want very much to make sure that everybody's on the same page about. About the expectations and what works for everybody. So I, I think, um. That resulted in what you are seeing.
Okay.
Um, and there's only so far that you can go without stepping over the line as far as those things go. And, and, and I think we'll have to wait and see what either, um, Mark either drafts, if he's, if that's where he's headed. With some kind of amendment to this to include that concern. But again, that probably would also have to go through John Foskett and it also involves a discussion with Jim and Michelle. And then bringing it back to here for at least a second reading.
And Erin, I, I always struggle with this, right? So there, there's things that we do as in the district because we want to do the right thing and all our teachers do want to do the right thing. And so, and, and there's a difference between that occurring and everybody being on the same page there and writing it down in a policy. Um, and things like that. So, uh, I think we set the framework and it can be, and Jim, you know, to my, that is kind of. It can be setting the expectations and supporting them, going beyond the policy and, and things like that. And, and, and the effectiveness can be the same without it being. You know, written down in, in the policy. Because sometimes just that portion of writing something down that we're going to do anyway. Becomes problematic for, you know, all the reasons that, that we know about, right? So, um, I think everybody wants to do the right thing and I think this at least is a step to saying, hey. And, and we can, we can set expectation. We, in here, we can say we want and recommend to them to do anything, right? And we have the other policy that we're good to. And, you know, I, I, I don't want to put words in Jim's mouth, but if someone said, hey, I needed to do this. I want to basically do what the other policy says. I'm pretty sure Jim and everyone would support and try to help them through that, that there, we wouldn't hold them to just doing the minimum that this policy. Says.
Yeah.
Paul, to you and Kathy, um, so this talks about, uh, DPH's designation of other states. Um, and that, but then covered travel says area. But it just made me think like, there's very red areas of the Commonwealth.
So, so, so just, uh, and, and it's make sure, because of timing, uh, this did not go through. And, and it's one of those things, so, so this was just my, my, I had to do this on, on my own and not consult with, with, with Kathy. So, uh, so this didn't go through the, the, the subcommittee, unfortunately. But I, I use the term area. And inside there, use state, uh, just so we have the flexibility within the, the policy. Should whatever change, I mean, who knows what's going to happen over the next six months and area might need to change and not be state. But can't imagine it changing to, hey, don't go to Worcester County, right? I don't, I don't foresee us doing that, but I intentionally, I make, I can change it to the area to say state, but. But that was just my thought on, on why I did that.
Okay. Okay, should we move to the student one now? I think we have something to. Okay, should we move to the student one now? I think we have something to at least work with on this for another another reading.
Yeah.
Paul?
Yep.
Aaron, to your point, I think we had, I think I shared this data recently. I think we had a hundred over a hundred and forty different district or towns that our staff come from. So. Which is interesting.
And and that would, yeah, we start getting into that. It's like, okay, so you can't come into work.
Great, it's weird.
Well, a lot of it, it's not only, you know, some of it's impossible to manage from a practical point of view. But there's also a limit to what we can tell. People, we from the school can tell people what they can do in their free time. I mean, there's this the state orders. And the federal orders, if there are any, and then there's a limit to how we can regulate what people do outside of school. What we do have control over is. You know, who we let into our buildings. So we can control that portion of it, but as far as so like getting. Too much into the weeds about you can go here, you can go there. I mean, that's where you get into the. The the part where the lawyer says, no, you can't say that. So and I understand why. I mean, I feel the same way about that. So if if that helps you understand, Aaron, you know, maybe why bust isn't. In in every place where we might like to have it, it's we can't. We don't have that control. But certainly what we're trying to say is let's all be on the same page here so that we can keep our school community safe. And that we can keep going to school in the way that we've been going so that kids can keep their teachers in person. So all right, Paul, let you get to the next one so that if Mark still has time, he can share some.
I'm actually Tracy took Matthew, so I'm all right.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you all know I I'm gonna have to leave at nine if we're not done, so.
Hopefully, hopefully it will be.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully.
I hope so too, but I don't want to be.
We'll push back our eight thirty.
I was gonna say I have an eight thirty two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Back in Texas. So 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 this policy is intended to cover anyone else. Aside from employees that. Are otherwise going to impact or interact within the school. So this this is. Anyone who is going to come into our schools, participate in athletics. Or board our our transportation or, you know, quite frankly, you're gonna have interaction within our schools or or anything like that. So that's that's the 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 gist of who's covered differently here. And and again, it tries to be broad and say, you if you're coming into school during school hours, if you're. Boarding public transportation, you're participating in athletics, right? So. It covers those and it says that it paints that broad brush saying, hey, when you can come to school. And when you can participate in athletics is the same thing. So if we're excluding you from doing one, it means the other as well. So most of the time, the the top section is going to be very similar. The difference here is we are asking the families to provide notice that they plan to travel. And and part of that is, you know, if we if we are gonna want to provide them a any work. That'll help us prepare for that. So it's also a little challenging as as far as drawing the line of, okay. Hold on a second. I I planned on traveling to New York and made my plans or whatever the case is and it was not, it was a low risk state when I did that. It's a higher state now, and so we have to draw the line somewhere. So we also said that the the debt, the the state of. Or the status of that state is at the point of notification. Right? So if you you notify us today that you're gonna go to Rhode Island, well, that's high risk. Or if you notify us, you're gonna go to New York, hey, that's low risk or whatever the case is. So the first section just talks about notification of travel. So it just asked that, you know, you provide us a note notification that, hey, we're gonna go to. That, you know, we're gonna go to Rhode Island for a week. We plan on coming back to school on this day. And that kind of sets the two different scenarios for returning to school. So what we're asking of families that go to. High risk areas is that you either. Self burn fourteen days. Or you come back, you wait until the fifth day after completing travel to get a negative test. And then can come back to school after that. And and that's kind of. You know, there's no perfect solution, there's no absolution, but that that's kind of the sweet spot, that fifth day. After potential exposure where. We're trusting the 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 result more. It's kind of similar to the positivity rates for stuff for states and things like that. How much do we trust? The case number that we have. Well, we trust it based on how many how many people are testing. So that positivity rate being low. Means we're we're catching the majority of them and and similar here. So that's what that fifth day. Fifth day does. And then what we're asking is when you come back, you're you're attesting that you followed all the all the guidelines. To be able to come back to school and that not only you, but the other people that traveled with you in your household. Have done that and are asymptomatic, right? We don't want you coming back if, yeah, you tested negative at, you know, after you got back, but. You know, somebody just got sick and, you know, that you traveled with. Things like that. So essentially, that's the that's the 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 high level of this. I didn't want to, you know, I'm not gonna read it to you, but. So this one, this one just goes a little further saying if you if you've traveled to these areas. And come back that we're we're asking you to to wait five, wait, wait to the fifth day after coming back to get that. Negative test before returning to physically returning to school. So with that, my thoughts, concerns.
Well, I guess, you know, from a practical perspective, Mark's concern in the in the first case would apply here too. Are we. Concerned about people who are just going out to dinner in a state that might be high risk or dropping off their child in a custody situation? You know, how do we how do we manage all of that?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I I honestly hadn't thought about the point that Paul or Aaron made a few minutes ago about. Looking at localities, right? I mean, if you there's parts of this state that. Have case rates that are are twenty or thirty four hundred thousand. And there are parts of other states that are considered high risk. That you could go to and it's probably the equivalent of a green, you know, Massachusetts. And it's really causing me to struggle with sort of. It's an evolution of the thoughts we were having last week. Just recognizing that, you know, the designations of green, yellow, red. Are too simplistic, right? I mean, that's it doesn't tell you enough to really evaluate risk. In any meaningful way. For probably ninety percent of the cases, right? I mean, if our circumstances are red because you have an outbreak at. At a department building or at some sort of residential facility. It doesn't really tell you that the risk national is all that higher. It might be the same for almost everybody. As if you went to a green community. And I I'm struggling with this particular policy because. I know I'm not. Not suggesting I've got a better answer, you know, to be clear. I know I think it's it's a it's a noble effort to try to address the issue. I'm just thinking about it from perspective of if we adopt the policy. We're gonna have members of the community that are going to ignore it. Right? We are going to have members in the community that. That will will do it regardless of whether they, you know, they they agree with it or they don't. They've the benefit of the policies and because when you're making before Paul, which is kind of. It's really in by taking a adopting a policy and communicating expectations. We're hoping to get sort of more people doing the right thing, right? And so I'm, as I think about this policy in particular, which. You know, it's to our families, right? We don't control, use the word control, but we don't have the same relationship with our families. As we do with our employees, always work for us and we have the right to manage the employment relationship. It more aggressively puts puts subject to more laws and restrictions and bargaining. And so as I think about this one. It feels to me then the way that you might ultimately get to higher level of compliance of or. A lower level of decision making is if we think about these concepts as. Procedures rather than policy. And I was thinking about if I were Kelly at the base. And I were to put this out as. In light of the spread of COVID, we want to communicate to all all families. Best practices, not to, I guess, we just. The best practices and and what we would ask for the community to do. I'm wondering whether we get a higher level cooperation from that. And sort of putting out a policy that says, you know, you need to tell us when you're gonna travel. These are the rules you need to follow when you come back, some of which are are gonna be covered by travel orders and some of which may not. I I will say I'm struggling a little bit with with this is a is a policy, not necessarily from the substance of it or what it's trying to get to. But the concept of. Trying to get into this level of control. Of word. Or whatever what some of our families are doing, because I think some of the some are gonna react to, you can't tell me what to do. When is if you're sort of more asking or will you operation, you might get a little more help. My my thought.
Yeah, and so so just at the beginning of what you were saying, I think the difference between trying to, it's almost. It's almost like the the positivity rates we talked about using Ashland as opposed to the state level, right?
Right.
In that. Locals, I don't think make any sense for try to try to apply these things to, but I think states talk more about. Larger, broader spreads that are usually policy or lack of policy based things. And so it's a risk, the risk of some. So I think the states, I think there's some value there. I get your point with, you know, when you when you strike it in too small, it's like. Yeah, the data just doesn't doesn't vet it. And as it relates to the the last part of what you were what you were saying. Let's be clear, there the 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 families you talked about that are gonna be like, you can't tell me what to do. No matter what we do here, right? They're not gonna, they're gonna do what they do. We're at risk to them today, tomorrow. They're they're they're. We're gonna we're gonna face the consequences of their actions. Despite anything we do. And I don't think how we phrase or go about is gonna affect them. So I I think what we where we focus is what do we think is gonna be the most effective way to. Communicate our expectations to the ones that are going to listen, right? So whatever we collectively think that is, I think that's our goal, right? Your true point.
I agree completely with that, Paul.
Other input? Aaron, are you talking? But muted.
Yeah, sorry, I have two options to mute. Yeah, so I I'm having similar concerns to Mark and I guess. Where and it's that blurring of a line, right? This is. Travel by our students, but is it necessarily more risky or not that your family is coming in? And gonna be with you. From a high risk state. You know, like that's where, you know, is the parent that's crossing the border to one town to deliver their children for custody? And they're gonna stay in that one home. How is that more risky from a policy perspective? Than the grandma flying up from Florida for to see all of her grandchildren? That's where I'm sort of torn as to. And that's why I was asking about the teeth and the must and the should, because to me that these don't. As a policy, I feel like they don't hold the weight as like. Maybe a signed letter of guidance from us as a. Committee with Jim and Audrey and Ed's, like if we all were together on something. Does that? Oh, sorry, I was just gonna ask if that made sense.
I wanted to say to that from my perspective, and I don't mean to contradict what I said a minute ago, but. You know, I what I don't want to do is is let you know kind of that phrase about what perfection be the enemy of good, you know, if you decide that there's some value in this. There are gonna be holes, right? There are just some things we're not gonna be able to address. Like, you know, family member flying from Florida or whatever. And so I don't, to me, that might just mean, you know, that there's a limit to what we can influence. And and again, I'm not. I've got different thoughts about the policy as a whole, but I think on that particular point, my reaction is, yeah, you're right. You know, but are we really gonna get to the point of then saying, and you have to disclose when you're receiving guests? And where they came from and whether they were tested and, you know, all that. In theory, those few people should be adhering to our travel order. In the state, right? And they should be getting tested. Before they come. Gap in that process, right? Or they should be quarantined when they get here, which they may or may not do. And they may or may not get tested two days after they get here when it's not that as effective as if it were five, so. It's one of the reasons this thing is spreading is because it it just doesn't lend itself to the simple control mechanism and. People aren't doing the control mechanisms consistently that they can do.
I I, you know, I actually thought about the the point you made, Aaron, and and. There there is a different risk profile for accepting one party from another state as opposed to. Your party going there and interacting in an environment in that other state, right? So there. I I get I get the point that, but you're interacting with a singular. Party from another state as opposed to going and spending time in an environment that has, where you're gonna have potentially multiple. Not about saying you can't go down to Rhode Island and spend time in a singular home and it's effectively the same thing as that. You know, accepting that those, but as a general rule, there there's a slight. You're talking about an individual coming from a high risks place as opposed to your your party going there and interacting with a larger. Thing in a higher higher risk area. So it's it's a, it's 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 well, it's well known and we and. We can put in here guidance, anything we want, right? So there's there's two levels of the policy. This is what we say you have to do. And we're gonna ask that you adhere to for sure. And then there's, hey. You know, we could put something in there if we thought it was gonna be. An effective way to communicate, or do we think that the policy is one thing and and Jim adding something to a newsletter is a more effective way to communicate? Hey, and remember this also. There's also a risk when you accept someone from out of state into your home as a guest. And please follow that, because that's that's a perfectly good and sound communication for Jim to to send out. Pre Thanksgiving, right? Because that almost certainly happened, that there are people in Massachusetts that are going to accept. As guests, family members from. Other states that are. Labeled as high risk, right? And so is it, and and that's where I think Mark was going, he's like, what's the most effective way to do it? We can put it in here, we can, as a as a as a suggestion, Jim can communicate it, we can do both. Whatever we think is gonna be the most effective. I mean, nothing's, there's no absolution here. There's no guarantees of anybody following what we what we put, but. More setting expectations and.
So I want to be able to move to the next part of the discussion, but I guess maybe some guidance for Paul who drafted the policy. As to whether or not the committee is comfortable with putting something in policy. Or whether there's some other mechanism. And if that's the case, we'll do a second reading next time. Or if the committee as a whole is feeling like policy is not the right place to address this. You know, we don't need to get to. That second meeting, at least we can then send it or who to whoever's gonna draft it for the other purpose. So I'd like to just kind of take a poll and see where everybody's feeling about whether this should be policy. Or whether this should be something else like a in the handbook. Handle by the principal or handled by Jim in a newsletter. And then. Take it from there so we can move on.
Lori, if I could, just.
Yeah.
Jim, from your perspective. If the if the committee wants to do this in whatever way, whether it's policy or whatever, do you feel that a policy? Is needed or helpful? If we said, hey, you know what? Let's let Jim handle this. Do you feel you need a policy that helps enable you to effectively do something similar to this? You know what I'm saying? At some point, somebody's gonna be like, you don't have the right to do that. And do we need a policy, even if it's not this in its current constitution, do we? In order, if you wanted to implement this and we said, you know, do it in a handbook. Do you feel you need something from a policy to at least substantiate that or?
So you and I've had part of the.
So you and I've had part of this conversation and I, and I've said, I, I think, I, I am supportive of what we're trying to do with a policy for the students. I, I, you know, the, the conversation about the, the teacher one can be left behind. But in terms of this component, I, I always think that we, we do talk about crossing the lines of procedural versus policy. And how can we implement whatever policy? I mean, our job is now to implement policy, right? If, if the school committee makes a policy, we have to figure out a way to make sure it's implemented appropriately. But I do, I, you know, I've, I was, you know, certainly advocating for, for this with Ed and Audrey. I know if they're still on, I can only see parts of people. You know, we had talked about making this a policy that was even much more strict than, than the, the executive order. So, but yes, I, I think there's value to me.
Well, that's what I was going to say before you said that, that maybe we do talk about that all the time. Proceed, procedure or policy, right? Are we crossing the line when we write a policy? Is that more procedure? But to me, I, I was going to make the comment that if you have a policy like this, or if, you know, if we modify it, if you have the policy, it might help to, it might help to make it more effective when Jim says in his newsletter, you know, we've got a policy now, or I don't know. That's what, that was going to be my comment.
It's a pandemic. This is all new, right? For every one of us. And, and that's, I guess that's the point, right? And we're focusing in this instance for a period of time. And, you know, ad nauseam, I've, I've sent every single week a comment about doing the right thing and.
Yeah. And, and, and Mark, that, that's, that's the other comment, conversation Jim and I have had, you know? We can, we can consult with John and, and certainly your expertise and everything. And then we're talking about labor laws in a pan, during a pandemic. So what's possible, what would be the rules in that space? And are you given more latitude? Who the heck knows, right?
Yeah. I think, you know, as I'm just looking at it and to Lori, to your question, I think what, as I'm looking again, the policy and seeing the different parts of it. I think the notification of travel part is the part that feels more procedural and feels more, or something I would expect the administration to be dealing with, right? Because it's, it's, it's basically saying, well, let us know where you're going because we, we're trying to keep track of people and it feels like, I, I don't know that I would expect the high degree of compliance. Because I don't think anybody's going to think about that. Really don't. But the returning to school component is basically saying, you're not coming back or we're not going to allow you back as a matter of policy unless. That feels more appropriate to me as a policy. And I'm, I'm thinking through this as I'm saying that out loud, so I don't, I don't think it is a too strong a reaction. But that might be where I'd be more comfortable sort of defining policies is around sort of what we're saying. People aren't going to be able to do, or if they do this, this is what's going to happen as a matter of policy.
So Mark, if I, if I could just, I'm fine with what you said. One thing that we've, I've, I spoke about with John as it relates to this policy and whether there's any way people could contest it. It was surrounded whether we are taking away someone's educational opportunities.
Right.
So unlike somebody's hospitalized, we're going to prepare some, some, some materials for them and stuff like that. They didn't, we didn't tell them, hey, go get hospitalized. Here we are saying you cannot come into school. So the intent here with the, with that section, at least I think we need some semblance of it. Whether it's exactly that, what it is now is something that describes, you're not just not coming to school. But and we're not, we're not depriving you of an educational opportunity. So I think the policy needs to at least address that somehow, whether it's this way or not. I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm fine with wherever we land on it. But just, but that's, that's kind of the, my only concern about totally getting rid of that section. Because it's basically says, you're not coming to school. And that's, that's it where, you know, and you'll probably understand more than I would about.
No, I, I do appreciate the point that certainly, you know, it's certainly, I was in of it, it might be the much, I'd have to look at our other policies to how, see how they're structured. But I'm sure we, we have protocols using the example that you used a minute ago. You know, if a kid is hospitalized for some period of time, I don't know that we have a policy that says what happens there. But I know that, that our building principals and our staff have a way of dealing with that. So it is the procedure and that's sort of how I, I'm mentally distinguishing between the two of the, the issue of procedure and policy. But I, I understand why there was more the, the notification travel element of it. But I think there's a way to address.
Yeah. And, and again, if, if Jim sets it as a, you know, it sets up something that provides this. It's because also, hey, if we are expecting or asking teachers say, hey, we don't want Bob to fall behind. You know, we want Bob to let the teacher know before, hey, I'm not going to be in school tomorrow. It's like, well, hold on a second. You know, you're, you're not going to get much thrown over the wall then. So, and, and I'm fine wherever everybody wants to land on.
So can I, can I suggest this? Somebody, either a volunteer, or I don't know if we want to keep it to you, Paul, since you've been working on the policy. Take a, a crack at drafting something that might remove some of the procedural things. But I think what I'm hearing from Jim is that support from the policy level would be, would be helpful. It might send the message that we all want to send and we run it by our lawyers. So we know that it's legally okay. So keeping something in policy and maybe taking the procedural parts out of it and letting Jim decide whether that's a gym thing or whether that's a building principal thing. And finish the discussion next week on the policy part of it that we need to vote on.
I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Way forward?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. I guess my challenge is I don't read that as procedural. So that's where I would like to understand the, the, because, but, but, you know, I, I, that's just where, you know, my lens, right? So if, if it's, hey, it's, it's saying the one week or is it, or pausing it back to say they have to provide notice, right?
Well, you know, we could, we could talk for three hours about this. I, I do remember and Kathy, you probably do too, though, when we worked with M A S C and Mike Gilbert. And there was a big part of our work with them over a whole year about what was policy and what was procedure. And they found at the time that we had too much procedure in our policies. So I think anytime you're saying like, these are the steps, you need to make a call, you need to write a note, you need to get a permission. Some of those things really are procedural. Whereas the school committee can say, you know, you, you know, if you have done this, you can't come back into the building. But if there's like step one, two, and three to get permission to come back, then that would be procedure. So does that help at all?
And Paul, I'm happy to take a crack at doing a markup for you. Just sharing that with you and we present it to the committee next week or go back and forth with it.
Okay. That'd be great. Yeah.
Yeah. Cause I think really honestly, I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to cover for all of the different contingencies. We're not, I think what we're trying to do here is minimize some risk to the, to the district and our students and our staff as best we can. And we're not, it's not going to be a hundred percent. But I think if we can make some kind of statement that we're all comfortable with and let the, you know, the procedural parts of it be handled elsewhere, I think that sounds like everybody will be comfortable with that.
So can you send the word version of, of that policy over?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll send it over. Then you can mark it up and send it back.
Okay. And then Jim, I have about 10 minutes, but do you want to start the part of the Thanksgiving discussion?
Yeah. Again, I, I think we just need to start, I'll frame it in such a way that we began the conversation last week. And obviously there's concern with regard to potential, you know, community spreads and in school spreading of, of COVID and, and looking at holidays and, and some districts have considered thinking about having the week after Thanksgiving off as a remote only. And if we were to go down that road, and I'm not suggesting we go down that road, I want to be clear. I, I think the more time we can have kids in our schools, the better. And even if it's the, the two, one, two hybrid or two, three hybrid, or if we want to call our, our system. I think it's critically important to have our kids in. Audrey, Ed and I go back and forth on this every day. And what's the right thing to do? What's not the right thing to do? Are the procedures that we're following now working? And, and by doing that, are we more likely to be able to keep our schools open? What's the, you know, prevailing thought around the Commonwealth is right now? I've only seen a handful of school districts that are even having this conversation at a level where they're going to do something. And I, I think it's important that we do have the conversation and it's, if we make a change, we need to know as a community of students and faculty and staff, what we're doing. Because it's to do a remote only teaching, it takes, you know, significant planning time. So that's just where I am. I, I, you know, I'm not asking for a decision. I'm just making sure it's on our radar and, and go from there. Audrey, I mean, you and I have had this conversation and if you just want to share your thoughts quickly, I think it'd be great.
Sorry, I was just talking to a teacher. You're talking about taking a break at Thanksgiving?
Yeah, any, yeah. And, and any breaks after that, right? Because we're setting a precedent that no matter what we have for extended period of time off, we may then have to consider the following week as well.
I just worry about the gatherings.
Right.
We, we, we seeing what happened with Halloween. And I think Thanksgiving is all about gathering. That's what we do at Thanksgiving. So. And it's more than 15 minutes, you're in a confined space, so the spread is more likely to happen. It won't be outdoors. So I told Jim, I'm on the fence. Do we wait for another week and see what happens with Thanksgiving? If we, I mean, with Halloween, if we get any more. But a part of, a part of me worries about the gatherings and the travel.
So Audrey, on the gatherings, do you think that, on one hand, Thanksgiving's all about gathering. But usually it's all about gathering with family and Halloween or, or other breaks or something like that. They're probably gathering, but they're gathering with random groups outside their, you know, somewhat normal circles. Is there a different respect, do you think? You know, so for me, for me, I'm trying to battle with that. I'm on the fence as well, you know, thinking about Thanksgiving. I'm going to think about it that way. I'm like, hold on a second. Well, they're probably getting together. The primary get togethers at Thanksgiving more so than other breaks and, and stuff like that are family members. And so those might be bubbles you're already somewhat interacting with on a weekly or bi-weekly basis anyway. So just curious as to your thoughts on that.
I don't know. I think how, I think Thanksgiving is, I know we talked a bit about it last week. We're, we're not doing anything in our home because of that, but I do, I do think people will, will gather. I think they're thinking it's not going to happen to us and you're in a closed environment for hours without a mask. And so the asymptomatic person could give it to somebody who's more vulnerable to grandma or to, you know, Aunt Suzie who's got diabetes or, I don't know. I just think the potential is there. Coming.
So many different levels of gathering. We're kind of just bringing our own personal way that we do things kind of to our, our lens that we're viewing this. If, if we were doing our normal Thanksgiving, which I think I already shared that we're not. But it would be five different families that don't normally spend time together. And that's what we do every single year. And other people might be a family where you just are gathering with the same people that you do see all the time. But that would not be the case if we decided to have our, and I'm sure that's the same thing. The people are planning on seeing their grandparents and their cousins and so forth. And I think we just have to expect that that's going to happen. And the decision is about whether we try to solve for that by giving some space or whether we let things fall into place.
I guess the way I'm, I'm thinking about it, and I, like everybody else, I'm struggling with it. I probably found myself thinking about it in different ways for times of, since we talked about it a week ago. But what it feels like to me is we're, if we're going to consider closing after Thanksgiving, which is going to remote for a week. What we're really trying to say is we're expecting that people are going to have these gatherings to some degree that there is going to be spread. And what we're hoping is that we functionally isolate those people or quarantine those people because they're not coming to school. And I'm not sure that's realistic, right? It, it, it limits the context that occur in, in school and probably does have some impact. But it's not like people come back from a Thanksgiving weekend if they went somewhere else or people were in the house and then they left. And then on Monday, just because school is remote, that they don't go gather with their friends, right? Somewhere else. And you know, my, my sense is that if we're right now, you know, I may say, I may feel differently tomorrow about this, but my sense is right now, if we're starting to think about an extended closure, very difficult to think about something that is, puts us back to school before the middle of January.
Right.
Because you're going to have a week after, like the first week of December, you had a couple of weeks before the Christmas break, the holiday break. You come back from that, you have the same problem because people gather on New Year's Eve often. And that's more kind of like the Halloween or it's in the main lane. It's not just necessary family, your, Paul. And by the time you let that calm down, you're, you're at Martin Luther King Day weekend. And so I think, because it feels like we're, in my mind, that would be the logical step if you're looking for a break. And that seems like a significant period of remote learning that I think is detrimental for the students. Be disinclined to go that route right now. But like I said, I've vacillated significantly over the past weeks since we started the dialogue.
I, I guess, you know, if we were to do something, what, I always go back to why are we doing it? And do we think it's going to be effective for whatever the reason is, right? And that's where I, I guess I'm still coming down on the side of we don't go remote. Just because, well, so why would we go remote? I guess I go back to that. Is it to give us time to contact trace? But if we believe, if we truly believe that, hey, we've seen nothing, nothing that indicates there's any spread in our school. And, you know, I don't, don't consider this some kind of crazy extremist view. But if you do look at, you know, school data from all over the world that have, you know, procedurals, procedures even remotely similar to ours in place, the data doesn't indicate that there is really spread in those situations, right? So closing school wouldn't stop the spread. It probably wouldn't, you know, or keep saying closing school, going remote. So to me, I, I, I don't know what we, and my fear is that we would then be taken in action because, hey, you're not contact tracing Monday. Right? Nobody's, nobody's tested positive. And so we end up with people testing positive on, and we're doing our contact tracing over the next weekend. And we maybe not have nailed everything down. And then we take another action. Now we're up two weeks, right? And then, you know, to Jim's point last time, if we're making this decision for Thanksgiving, it's kind of like we're playing poker and we're only on the first round of betting. And if, if I bet a certain amount, I got to go the rest of the way. We are pretty much saying, we're going to do this for every break, right? What, what, what situation would we be doing it for Thanksgiving? And not do it for, you know, the, the Christmas, New Year's break, the, the spring break, unless something medically changes, right? From, from the pandemic's perspective. So I also look at it from that, you know, it's not just a Thanksgiving conversation at this point. Unless there's some significant change, we're talking about all these breaks, right?
Thanks, Paul. And I'm, and I'm sorry to interrupt. Mark, can I ask you to manage the rest of the meeting? And if you guys want, you can keep talking about this, although just to be clear, we're not deciding on this today. Just starting the conversation and I would imagine to Audrey's point, by next week, we might know more about what the Halloween gatherings, if there were any. How they unfolded in the district, we will know more about what's going on in our community with the spread. And I know Jim has asked for some, at least clarity for the staff so they can plan. So it might not seem by next week that we know everything we need to know to make that call. But we're also trying to. But we're also trying to give everybody that, the notice that they need, so.
Before you go, just find out whether people wanna continue the dialogue going, or people are ready to adjourn. I don't know if Aaron or Kathy wanna join in or?
No, I'm ready to adjourn, I mean, I think, you know, we pick it up next week. I was just gonna make the point that if we close that week of, after Thanksgiving cohort, cohort B, the second group will have, will miss an extra week of being in the building, so. That's just a point I wanted to make, but no, I think I'm ready to, you know, we could talk about it next week, pick it up next week.
I'm picking up next week too, I think in my initial knee-jerk reaction, Paul and Mark is like you, was probably not to close. I actually think it potentially, at first I was thinking, oh, that's a good idea because you get almost 14 days from Thanksgiving Day for symptoms to show up, but that's assuming that people stop seeing people on Thanksgiving Day. And I think that's a falsity in of itself, and then the whole week out of school, how many other playdates are gonna be encouraged? I think it could actually backfire in our faces.
Lori couldn't stay for the motion to adjourn, say, anybody else have anything else that they, they wanted to chime in on before we break?
Nope.
No, okay, all right, so I, I get the, the hard part of running the meeting, just saying thank you, everybody. And Audrey, Jim, thanks, everybody for being here. We have motion to adjourn. Motion, Aaron's seconded, Kathy?
Yes.
Paul?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
And I for me, you're adjourned, have a good weekend, everybody.
Thank you, goodbye, everybody.